Good evening. We call the School Board of St. Lucie County regularly scheduled meeting to order, and welcome. It is great to see such a full house. I know that you didn't come to see us. We know that it's for the children, but we're all for the children and we're delighted that you're here and delighted that you share your children with us tonight. If we could please, we will stand for the pledge and then the Kids at Hope pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am a kid at home. I am talented, smart, and capable of success. I have dreams for the future and now I'm dreaming those golden dreams every day. All children are capable of success, no exceptions.
And now the adult. We want to affirm to the children. And now let us, adults, affirm to the children our pledge to you. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. So, the moment that we really are here for is to see these fabulous children perform. And I have to tell you before you even start, I already have my ticket to come and see it Thursday night, so I am very excited about that. Yes. So, these are students from Rivers Edge, and before they perform, I'm going to ask if parents and school family members would stand and let us thank you appropriately for sharing your children with us. So, we are going to come down so that we can see your performance, so give us a second to get down in front of you, and then we will be ready for you to begin.
And talk a big bear, Baloo. And we've got lots of jungle friends we want to introduce to you. Away we go to the jungle, over hill and valley and brook. So set the stage and turn the page and open up the jungle book. So set the stage and turn the page and open up the jungle book. Come along and hear a story, strange and marvelous and true. Let us take you to the jungle, under skies of blue. Deep inside this sleepy jungle, lived a little orphan boy. Old time race, he picked a mowgli. He grew up to be a pride and roar. Pride and joy, pride and joy. Happy was the man, the mowgli, oh, the jungle's pride and roar. Oh, he lived well in the jungle, till the tiger gave a roar. Get the boy out of my jungle. He can't stay here anymore. All his jungle family loved him, loved him more than words can say. They knew mowgli was in danger, mowgli must be sent away. Sent away, sent away, to protect him from the tiger. Mowgli must be sent away. If you're wondering what will happen, come along and take a look. Come and listen to the story that we call the jungle book. Take a look, take a look, take a look, take a look. Come and listen to the story and begin the jungle, jungle book. Look for the bare necessities, the simple bare necessities. Forget about your worries and your strife. I mean the bare necessities, mother nature's recipes that bring the bare necessities of life. Wherever I wander, wherever I roam, I couldn't be fonder of my big home. The bees are buzzing in the trees to make some honey just for me. When you look under the rocks and plants and take a glance at a fancy ant's nest, they try a few. Ow! The bare necessities of life will come to you. They'll come to you.
Of all the ridiculous, oh no, Baloo, do you see these tiger tracks? Your connoisseur could be on our trail. I need to find out.
Don't you worry, Baggy. Go on ahead, little buddy's safe with me.
Don't move.
We won't move, but we can groove. Come on, little buddy, let's show them how it's done. Wherever I wander.
Wherever I roam. I couldn't be fonder of my big home. The bees are buzzing in the trees to make some honey just for me. When you look under the rocks and plants and take a glance at a fancy ant's nest, they try a few.
Don't mind if I do.
Yeah! The bare necessities of life will come to you. They'll come to you. They'll come to you. They'll come to you. You, you, you. The bare necessities of life. Oh, yeah!
I challenge anybody in here that wasn't moved by that, okay? I mean, we're all just bouncing around and having a great time. Thank you, students. That was fabulous. I can't wait to see you again Thursday night. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
And to these wonderful leaders of our students here, an extra applause for them as well. So, just to plug, Thursday night and Friday night at the school, seven, doors open at 6:30.
Right. Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are in my front line. You are going to turn, and you're going to follow Mr. Earl. Follow behind Alessio, please. I mean, my second row is not around.
That's just fabulous. We do have a public hearing this evening to come before us, and at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the topic, which is adoption of a new school board policy for the threat assessment policy. Any in the audience that wish to address this? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
I recommend the board adopt a new threat assessment policy.
Board members, we've received the recommendation. Do I have a motion? Motion and second, any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And now, board members, if we can, and the public hearing is closed. And board members, if you will join me on the floor again with the superintendent, we'll have our special orders of business.
Dr. Kevin G. Perry is asking the board to join him and Representative Dolores Hogan-Johnson in recognizing the winner of the Art in the Capitol contest.
Madam Chair, School Board Member, Superintendent Gent, I'm pleased to come before you with the recognition of the arts. While some believe the arts are extracurricular activities in St. Lucie Public Schools, we believe just the opposite. To further support the importance of the arts, House Bill 701 related to the Art in the Capitol competition was signed into the legislature in 2016. The Art in the Capitol competition is a statewide visual arts competition that requires each school district to annually hold an art competition for students in grades six through eight. The winning selection is then given to the legislator from that district, and it resides in the Capitol during the entire time of the legislative session. This year's winner is from Oakhamock K-8 School, and we're pleased to recognize, along with our Representative Dolores Hogan-Johnson, who's my banner tonight, Amber Hobbs. When you look at Amber's artwork, it's actually a picture of a dancer with a lot of words that describes the journey of dancers, but those words actually describe the journey that many of us take in pursuit of excellence in everything that we do. Congratulations again to Amber Hobbs and Representative Dolores Hogan-Johnson. And would Amber's mom please stand?
And now we move to some very special awards for those who give support to our schools each and every day. I invite a lady who is our volunteer coordinator, Mrs. Martha Underwood, to please come forward. And as she does, I would like to mention that she epitomizes that volunteer spirit that our members of the community have. She worked for the school district for 32 years, retired, and then came back as our volunteer coordinator, and she's been doing that for six years. She's a wonderful person and a great advocate for schools, Martha Underwood.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. I would like to introduce our three Outstanding Volunteers of the Year for 2018-19. Pat Orlandi is our Outstanding Volunteer of the Year in the adult category from Northport K-8. For the past three years, Pat and her husband Rad Orlandi and a large contingency of congregation members from First United Church of Port St. Lucie has worked tirelessly as tutors, mentors, and supporters in an exemplary show of service. Pat has mentored in several classrooms on campus, assisting second and third grade teachers with students on reading strategies and checking student papers. Pat also began the Northport Faith and Literacy Summer Reading Program. She coordinates books, donations from the congregation of First United Methodist Church, as well as sorts, labels, and boxes, books donated by the church membership. Pat also coordinates with Port St. Lucie Baptist Church to make the book drive stronger and bring even more books to the children at Northport K-8. She recruits other community churches to get involved with their neighborhood schools. Last year, the church has collected over 3,000 books to entice students to make a serious plan for summer reading. Pat helps coordinate the efforts of the church congregation to bring breakfast and lunch to the Northport teachers and staff every single teacher workday and professional development day. Pat works in supplying well over 100 filled book bags to the neediest of the students at Northport K-8, as well as toothbrushes and toothpaste. One of Pat's goals this year was to help volunteerism, encourage more assistance for teachers and students' needs. A huge thank you to you, Pat, the First United Methodist Church of Port St. Lucie, your Northport family, and St. Lucie Public Schools. Thank you. It is with great pleasure I present to you our Senior Outstanding Volunteer of the Year, Tim Riordan at Parkway Elementary. Tim called Principal Carolyn Wilkins to ask her if he could discuss a school supply drive for the children at Parkway. That meeting was the catalyst to the life, changed the lives of every child at Parkway. Tim asked if she would share information about the wonderful staff and fantastic students that attend her school. She shared about poverty and how it affects children, also sharing how the teachers often try to fill the needs of their students. He listened and then offered help by starting the Big Apple Ministries. Boy, did he deliver. Tim went back to St. Bernadette Catholic Church and started Big Apple Ministry. On August night, he came to Parkway Elementary with his group of 50 people and delivered backpacks and school supplies to Parkway. They brought 481 backpacks filled with every supply listed on the children's supply list. They also unloaded supplies for teachers such as tissues, wipes, and so many other supplies. They calculated the value of the supplies for the students and teachers to be about $24,000. Tim has led his group through 1,325 hours of stewardship. That's what he likes to call it. Tim's vision and his plan level the playing field for the students at Parkway. I am sure every school would like to get a call, making sure every child starts school on day one with all of the supplies they need to help them begin their successful journey through their school year. Thank you, Tim, from your Parkway family, St. Bernadette Catholic Church, and St. Lucie Public Schools. Thank you so much. Okay, would the rest of St., the Big Apple Ministries come forward to have a picture Big Apple Ministries, please come forward. from Rivers Edge Elementary. Terry has been a dedicated volunteer at Rivers Edge for several years. He eagerly helps the school in many ways. Terry is part of the weekly community tutoring program and works with students one-on-one in reading. His ability to motivate others and his patience with students makes him the perfect tutor. He also supports the Rivers Edge drama productions. He helps run lines, assists the director, and is part of the stage crew for each performance. His knowledge and theater presence with the students is comforting, and the students willingly look at him as a role model. In addition to selling the yearbook, Terry can be counted on with setting up and running the book fair. He is such a team player and willing to help in any situation. At the end of the year, he runs our Reading Counts Prize Store, where students exchange their reading count points for prizes. Working in the store enables Terry to bring the students full circle, helping students with their reading skills to celebrate their reading successes. Terry helps in all aspects of Relay for Life, from the planning stage, setting up, running a booth, walking, participating in the games, and cleaning up. He is hardworking and dependable. Every month, Terry edits the Otter Newsletter. His writing and editing skills are exceptional and help so much in publishing the newsletter. Terry has been invaluable, bringing extra events to our students. He's a joy to work with, and we appreciate his dedication and infectious attitude. Terry is such a good-hearted and generally kind, well-mannered. He is a true role model and asset to Rivers Edge Elementary. Terry, thank you for all you do for us, for St. Lucie Public Schools, and congratulations from your Rivers Edge family. Thank you so much. Thanks to all the volunteers. Thank you so much. Thanks.
And now, we are going to move to the winners of the Samuel S. Gaines Essay Contest. Dr. Kevin Perry, would please come forward.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Mr. Gent, the contest is named for a true educational pioneer who served the children of St. Lucie Public Schools for 34-plus years. Dr. Samuel S. Gaines African-American Essay Contest is part of St. Lucie Public Schools' celebration of African-American history, where students in grades three through 12 are asked to write an essay that describes an African-American person in St. Lucie County who has made a difference in that student's life and explain what the person has done to make such an impact. Since the first initiation of this scholarship, we have a loyal supporter in Mr. Brian Garcia of Remnant Construction, who provides the monetary scholarships that the students are receiving tonight. Brian, will you please join us? I just want to also tell you thank you for your continual support, Mr. Garcia. And at this time, I'm going to recognize the elementary students, third through first place, Malachi Davis, Maya Taggart, and Gabrielle Thomas. The middle school students, third through first place, Nathan Klein, Elora Pierre, and Dominique Thomas. And our high school winners, third through first place, Daya Reynoso, Alexis Kamisi, And while the students are coming forward, if there are any parents in the audience of these wonderful writers, would you please stand and be recognized at this time also? Thank you, thank you, thank you. And parents, if you want to come closer for pictures, please don't hesitate to do And once again, let's join in collective applause to congratulate these excellent writers.
This evening, we are also pleased to recognize students who participated in the following state-level academic competitions: the Science Fair, the History Day Fair, the Project Citizen, and the Commissioner's Academic Challenge. Now, this is a series of competitions that is fantastic for our students and provides great opportunities. We also have a lot of people here on the ground floor doing the work to get these competitions underway, and this evening, we have Mr. Paul Reeve and Kate Ems, who coordinate and lead these efforts, and I'd like to say thank you to them. And in addition, our children get the support from their parents, and there are many parents here for them tonight, so we're going to reverse the order. If you are a parent of a student in one of these four competitions, let's say thank you to you before we invite your children up, so please stand. All right, we'll begin with Science Fair. The 31st Annual Local STEM Fair was host to over 240 middle and high school student projects. In the wide array of quality projects submitted, judges identified the top projects in each category based on rigorous rubrics assessing content and process. From this academic competition, students' projects were selected to move on to the state level, and we recognize our state and international winners this evening. Please come forward from the junior division, Robert Sansone, Anna Rose Hillhorst, Jonathan Thomas, Madison Atkins, Like Ritual, Ashwin Dar. And as they come forward, our senior division, Nchipa Dashanjit, Shira Banik, Nicole Vargas, Nargali Cruz, Joseph Par, Viraj Parikh, Kalijing, and Lilian Crawford from the senior division. And at the International State Fair level, we have two students who will be moving on to this very auspicious event, Nchapa Dashajit and Shira Banik, and they are already up here. Congratulations to you two. Congratulations to you two. We've got a couple moms taking pictures. Okay, all right. We now move on to Florida's History Day. In February, over 200 finalists presented their History Day projects to judges. The first and second-place winners in each category and division of the District History Day Fair advanced to the state contest in Tallahassee just this last week. This evening, we celebrate the students who represented the district at this event, and I would like to mention that in addition to our students, there were over 1,000 students up there participating in this event. What a great opportunity. Please come forward, Nicole Coons, Savannah Manning, Eric Presley, Samuel Hall, Anna Rose Hillhorst, Sophie Ronstein, Lacey Ford, Brooke Hundley, Olivia Donnelly, Diego Marc Velez, Evelyn Hiller, Jasmine Chong, Arina Rosado, Lauren Imbert, Ella Tredway, Liam Bion, Jacob Guero, Caverny Mathias, Miles Gittens, La Portia Harris, Gladine Legere, Jaden Tyson, Aaliyah Dunkley, Victoria Grenier, Kyler Risk, Brian Avalos, Melody Correa, Javari Cooper, All right, thank you. And now for Project Citizen. St. Lucy Public Schools' 7th graders don't just talk about perceived problems in the community, they seek solutions and find ways to put their plans into action in Project Citizen Showcase. Here, our students work to identify a problem in their community, they research public policy, contemplate solutions to the problem, and create an action plan. This is an outstanding opportunity for students to learn, to work collaboratively, and to learn about the government through a new lens. It gives them a great perspective on how they can be contributing members of society and change-makers. Distinguished judges from area municipalities, research centers, and community organizations speak to the students about their projects and discern award status. Two St. Lucy Public Schools teams will compete at the state-level competition in the coming month. We invite Lincoln Park Academy, Ms. Boise's class, who did food inspection correction, and Westgate K8, Ms. Kapler's class, Focus on the Future. That was the name of their two projects. And now, an event that I get to practice for each year and work on some of the questions to share with the students, the Commissioner's Academic Challenge. What an event this is. Earlier this year, St. Lucy Public Schools hosted the local version of the Commissioner's Academic Challenge, and here, local high schools' teams competed for top honors and individual team members vied for a seat on the prestigious Team St. Lucy, an elite six-member team representing St. Lucy Public Schools at the 34th Annual Commissioner's Academic Challenge. The state competition took place in April at Disney's Boardwalk Inn, where St. Lucy team advanced to Division II finals and ended up finishing fifth in the state. We invite our team members to please come forward, Kalijing, Madeline Sosa, Alan Senkus, Maria Bantalago Hernandez, Matthew Zoll, and Ryan Liu, along with their coaches. Please come forward. Good? All right. There we go. So you may be aware that many of us are wearing green this evening. The School Board will join together with Governor Ron DeSantis, who has proclaimed May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month. For this, I invite Mr. Bill Tomlinson forward.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Jent, it is my pleasure to read the Governor's proclamation declaring May 9th as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day and the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families is fundamental to Florida's bright futures, and whereas it is important that youth, family, and communities learn about the warning signs of mental health disorders and know where to obtain the necessary assistance and services, and whereas open dialogue can encourage individuals with mental health needs to seek help and essential component to fight the stigma associated with mental health. Whereas there is a need for increased access to comprehensive services that are family-driven, youth-guided, culturally and linguistically competent, and community-based, and whereas Children's Mental Health Awareness Day provides a special opportunity for all Floridians to recognize and promote the importance of children's mental health and well-being. Therefore, I, Ron DeSantis, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby extend my support to all observing May 9th as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day and May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And I would personally like to thank you, as the Board and the Superintendent, for your continued efforts as we work to support the growing need for mental health in our schools and with our students. Thank you so much for all you do every day to eliminate the barriers to access for children.
And we are at the final portion of our Special Orders of Business, the STAR Awards. This program's focus is to recognize employees for their behavior, skills, and action that correlate with the district's vision and acknowledge those who exemplify its core values. We begin tonight with a STAR Award for Ms. Tara Nettles, if you would please come forward. She is a pre-K teacher at Windmill Elementary, and this award is presented based on one of her parents' appreciation notes. "I appreciate my child's teacher at Windmill Point Elementary. Mrs. Nettles just loves her job, and it shows. She cares about her students, and my daughter loves her pre-K class. She is a very dedicated teacher, and I'm going to miss my child being in her class." Thank you, Mrs. Nettles. Next, I would invite Ms. Tabitha Jackson, who drives bus 2504. This, too, is based upon a parent sharing her thoughts. "Tabitha Jackson is truly an angel. I have special-needs boys, and they get on the bus with her twice per day and do so with ease. They give me a hard time just getting in the car. The other day, one of my boys had a personal accident, and he gets embarrassed and emotional. Ms. Jackson handled it in such a way that put my mind at ease, and I knew they were in good hands. That day, she hugged my son and told him it was okay and not to cry, and by the time he got to me, he had a big smile on his face as he bounced off the bus. They only show the bad things that happen so much in our everyday life, but we always have these simple acts of kindness that are being done and should be recognized. Thank you to whoever hired this woman, because she is heaven-sent. Thank you for all you do." Ms. Jennifer Glidden, from Bayshore Elementary. A parent sent an appreciation letter about this special teacher. "My child had Ms. Glidden last year, and she appreciates what this teacher did last year and continues to do this year." She says, "Ms. Glidden has always given my son extra attention when he was uncomfortable, which has helped him build needed self-confidence. She has pushed him hard, and has done so as if he were her own child, to help him get where he needed to go. Now, even though he's not her teacher, she visits him in class and keeps encouraging him, and she cares so much about his success. I truly do appreciate her effort, as it has made all the difference in the world for my child's education and his well-being." And from Student Assignment, please come forward, Yanet Plah. "We go about our daily lives and our work, and we never quite know who might be watching us, but rest assured, someone always is." This comes from a parent who was in the Student Assignment office, and she says, "I would like someone to know that Yanet is an outstanding employee and representative of St. Lucy Public Schools. She expressed so much care and concern with not only my situation, but the other folks who were in the office that day as well. She does not just assist you, she goes above and beyond to make sure that all is well." Thank you. And again, from Transportation, please come forward, Ms. Pam Hayes, Bus Driver 3301. "Schools also see and appreciate the work that individuals do." This particular one comes from Lakewood Park Elementary. Mrs. Hayes is the bus driver of 3301 for Lakewood Park. She is ever vigilant as a driver and School Board employee. She was using her with-it-ness when driving her students home one day, and she overheard a situation between two students and then spoke to them about helping one young lady out of a potentially dangerous situation. She builds relationships with her students, and this certainly paid off for her, as she was able to keep this child safe. Thank you so much for all you do." And we'll circle back to Student Assignment one more time, but there's a unique situation here, because the gentleman, Fresnel Sanon, who is coming forward, was on light duty in the Student Assignment office, but he also serves the Transportation Department. So, we have from a very grateful parent. "I visited Student Assignment today, and I wanted to let you know I received fantastic, friendly, and courteous customer service from Mr. Sanon. As I said, this is unique, because since 2011, even though he's in Transportation, he works to support the Student Service Department during their peak times, and they certainly do appreciate you, as does Transportation. At this time, we will receive the report from our CTA members. Do anyone here -- yes, here she comes.
Good evening, Board Members. Chairwoman Holly and Superintendent Jent, it's so nice to see, on an evening where we started with a packed crowd, so many of our students and staff being recognized, especially as we approach the end of the school year. So, as we get closer to the end of the school year, we also approach our non-reappointment deadlines. And unfortunately, across the state of Florida, for the 1920 school year, we are predicted to have an overwhelming shortage of approximately 10,000 teachers. Historically, here in St. Lucy County, we are able to rehire about 50% of our non-reappointed teachers. So my message tonight is really more of a reminder to all of us that we should be doing everything that we possibly can to keep our teachers here in the district with us where they belong. In fact, this last week alone, I've spoken to two different teachers, both rated as highly effective, one just a fraction of a point away from being highly effective. And we are potentially losing those two STAR teachers because of non-reappointments. Again, so just more of a reminder to all of us to be vigilant in keeping our teachers here in St. Lucy County where they belong. Thank you.
WA with us tonight for a report? Okay, seeing none. We will move then, Board Members, into our Consent Agenda. I would accept a motion at this time to adopt the Consent Agenda as presented. Thank you, thank you. Superintendent Jent, may we have your recommendation before we?
I recommend approval of the Consent Agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Board Members, are there any items that you need to have pulled for separate discussion or separate vote? Seeing none, we have a motion to -- we have a recommendation from the Superintendent to accept the Consent Agenda as presented, with all items inclusive.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And Board Members, just for your awareness, there are informational reports that require no action from us, but you can find them on the sheets that have been printed, as well as on your computer and the board docs. Mr. Superintendent, your report?
Thank you. Just a few items. Number one, this is -- we have -- this is our last School Board meeting for the year, for the academic year, and then we'll meet together again in June, but the year will be over, so we're winding down our last three weeks. Our graduation season begins next week, next Tuesday, Centennial, at 8:30 a.m. at the Finn Center, and then they'll have their two ceremonies, and Westwood will follow up, and then the next day, Treasure Coast High School, and LPA, and then finally, Central and Port St. Lucie High School. We're looking forward to that. And then the following week, up at Lincoln Park Academy at the Auditorium, Performance Based Prep will graduate on the 29th, Mosaic on the 29th, and Acceleration Academy. So we're looking forward to that time. We want to remind folks to get to the events early. Those that would have some special needs, really need to get -- try to get there a few minutes early as well, because there's a lot of folks that are there. We're limited in the amount of carts that we have this year that we'd be able to get folks from their cars up to the building that would have some special needs, so we just encourage everyone to get out early to avoid the traffic rush. So, we just encourage everyone to get out early to avoid the traffic rush. Again, we want to say thank you to our community and to our voters who, we supported our referendum. We had a 66% yes vote. We had 33% of the voters come out, which was more than came out and voted in the August primary. And we will begin to negotiate with our CTA partners here in the next few weeks and look forward to working out that issue. And then those dollars will be available for our teachers when the school year starts as well as making sure that we have a school resource officer on every campus and working on some of our mental health issues and services as well. So, we're so grateful to the community for what they've done. We can't say that enough. And I just want to also, through the legislation itself, and some of the board members may say this, but there was going to be, it went on really to the last day, but these dollars, we got it under the window and these dollars will go to St. Lucy Public School teachers for our regular school centers. And these dollars, the salary dollars are not shared with the charter schools. The new statute went into effect, will affect July 1st and then on out for any communities that do these sorts of things. But this was really for our teachers. We will also, through the safety and health safety, we'll make sure, as we had sent a letter out beforehand as well, that those needs with school resources on every campus, there'll be an allocation to the charter schools. And then these dollars will pick up that shortfall as well as whatever mental health plan they take. But we do want to thank our community for that. The Creative Arts Academy, we saw the kids today from Rivers Edge, they're going to be doing their coming-of-age musical Dear Edwina Jr. on May 23rd and 24th in the Creative Arts Historical Auditorium. And the district summer musical Oklahoma will be June 12th through the 16th at Port St. Lucie High School. Folks, if they've been paying attention to the news and hepatitis A, the vaccine is free for children through the Florida Department of Health in St. Lucy County. It's called the Vaccines for Children Program. If you need additional information, contact the Health Department or go online to look for that information. We will have a career fair this Saturday at St. Lucy West K-8, hiring for the vacancies that we have for the upcoming year, and that's from 10 to 12 o'clock over at St. Lucy West K-8. Teachers can register online for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Harold, do you have a report?
No, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move then to our school board member reports, and Mr. Ingersoll will begin with you.
Sure. I just want to echo Superintendent's, thank you to the community for supporting our teachers and the other items on that referendum. Appreciate, appreciate everybody's work. Thank you, board, for holding tight on holding graduation at the Fenn Center. Notice it starts raining again when graduation comes around. I know it was a controversy about six months ago and everybody came and doesn't, they don't understand the rain and the fairgrounds, so we won't be drowning out. Also, I spent a good Saturday over at Village Green Elementary and want to thank Terry Davis for the invite. It was pretty cool. They're showing their gardening and the students were really into it.
Dr. Mills?
I'm going to hold my comments until after we've heard from the speakers. I've had a lot of calls and people addressing some incidents that happened in a couple of our schools, and I want to hear from our scheduled speakers before I comment on anything.
Ms. Hilsen?
Just want to thank all our staff. It's been an amazing year. It's been a tough year, which I think we say that every year, as we wait for the state to make decisions that we have to handle on a local level. But I want to thank all our employees. I look at this new building that's going up and how, how much time and effort from all of our people in our building department and purchasing department. I mean, it's such a massive undertaking and our superintendent, everyone has a part in that. And it's sorely needed, obviously, and we want it to be used by the community as well as by the school board. It's a real community effort for us. But I, my heart goes out to so many of our principals and our teachers that work every day, and it seems to get harder when I look at the mental health issue with our children. We are seeing children baker acted at kindergarten, first, second grade. I mean, we are seeing unbelievable things happen in our schools and we are, in many cases, the parent. If the parent is unable to parent for whatever reasons, and I think, I just believe our teachers are asked to do more and more, our paraprofessionals, our bus drivers, even our cafeteria workers, all these people, it's about relationships. And you all are amazing and the people watching at home, I hope they know the heart of St. Lucy County and what these staff people, what our employees do. I thank you so much for all your hard work this year. Thank you.
Ms. Hensley?
Well, legislature is finished and we wait for the governor's pen. However, we had some significant wins unless he vetoes them. And a lot of that has to do with teacher certifications and flexibility in school safety, some things that are really key to help make sure our district keeps moving forward. The certification piece, we think that's a significant win because the reason we often have teachers non-renewed is because they have difficulty passing a test that the state has allowed to be created that is often a disconnect with what they're actually teaching in the classroom. So, that is a big win. And the flexibility with school safety, we didn't start off with much flexibility. We did end up with flexibility and that's a good thing. What we did find out in great measure is this county seems to be leading the state in a lot of issues, and so we have been willing to share the expertise of our staff with those that are in the lawmaking business in Tallahassee, to some measure of success. And I think that's fantastic. So, once again, our community showed itself and how much they support its children, and we are able to share those best practices way beyond state line.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. We will now move to our scheduled speaker's component of our meeting, and I will call you in the order as listed on the agenda. And let me remind you, as a scheduled speaker, you will have five minutes. Our attorney, Mr. Harold, will be our timekeeper. We don't have any of the fancy lights, so you just have to keep your ear tuned for him to call time for you. But our first speaker, and we welcome you to the podium, is Mary Sermons. Mary, if you would be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, please?
Say that again.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Mary Sermons. My address is 2207 North 51st Street, Fort Pierce, Florida, 34946. I stand before you, board members, outraged and saddened. On April the 9th, 2019, an SRO body slammed my great-grandson to the ground. The assault was intentional and deliberate. The results could have been devastating that resulted in death or total paralysis. I'm a nurse, been a nurse for almost 50 years. This officer is exonerated by the sheriff and a public servant. To add insult to injury, a teacher that was my grandson's chest bumped filed a battery charge and he was sentenced to 21 days in juvenile detention. I thank God today that my great-grandson had no physical injuries that we can see at this time, but the emotional and the psychological injuries are yet to be told. School board members, we elected you to protect our children in these schools, and I can say that I've been let down. You have done, you have not done your duty to us. We did the pledge allegiance to the flag that says justice for all, that espoused in the pledge. Is this a farce? Is there really justice for all? What do I want? Number one, I want that SRO fired, to never come in contact with children again. Have you watched the video? He was deliberate and angry and with what appeared to be intent to harm, not to restrain. His action is just the tip of the iceberg of many other SROs who've assaulted our children. And I don't have to want, I don't want to go there, our black and brown children over the protection, under the protection of the law. We, as parents, number two of these children in your care, want to see policy adopted by the St. Lucie County School Board according to the House bill that has been signed into statute, that is House Bill 349. We want concerned citizen oversight. We, as parents of children in your care, want to see the policy of training of the SROs that we voted for y'all to have more in the schools, who will be working with our children, especially our ESC children, as per House Bill 349. The sheriff went to the public very soon after the incident to protect this officer and malign the character of a minor that's not right morally or legally. The Parkline shooter was treated better than my great-grandson, and he had not committed a heinous crime. That same sheriff did an internal investigation to absorb his officer and department of any acts of wrongdoing, which was by visual observance, excessive force. A picture or video paints a thousand words that contradicts what had been said. It's on Facebook, it's on WPBF, it's across the nation. Superintendent Gent, you came to the public to ask for funds, and as tonight you said those funds will be available for teacher pay, to increase mental health awareness in schools, increase SROs in schools. Will these also added SROs, if not trained properly, act the same way that the one at Lincoln Park did? The Lord tells me that vengeance is his. "But be not mocked, as a man soweth, so shall he reap." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicole Reynolds.
All right. I sure will. Good evening, board members. My name is Nicole Reynolds, 1809 Southwest Fort Pierce, Florida, 3497, 34947. Okay. Good evening, board members, family, friends, and greetings to the little kids. I come as a concerned parent of voice for the kids. I serve laws of safety, procedures, and protocol in our school system, not just for our kids, but for staff, too. On April the 25th, there was an incident that happened, and I don't want to point fingers at anyone because I do believe that the employees did the best that they could. But my concern is, if we don't fix the cracks and the crinkles or the little things that's broken, we would never have a successful future. And I do believe that the kids are our future, as Whitney Houston said. But the thing is this, believing is having faith. I have the faith, and faith is the substance of things hoped for and the evidence of things not seen, but we missing one part. Work without faith is dead. And my thing is, it's going to take not just y'all, it's going to take parents. It's going to take me, it's going to take you, it's going to take we as people to come together as a state, as a city, as a county, as a neighborhood. Public school system needs the parents' work together for the safety of all. We send our kids there to be safety. We send them to learn, to come back home. As y'all can see on the news, you have seen so many incidents of kids going to school, fighting, and not coming home. And I feel that is a shame because no one's sending their kids to a place to be killed. No one's sending their kids to a place to be bullied. No one's sending their kids to a place to be manipulated, to be beat up, to be anything. We're sending them there to get an education, to go out in the world, to be successful. My thing is this, at that incident, when I called, my only concern was, I called to let you know heads up of what's going on so you can get on the top of things. I can truly say the ball was dropped because at that point in time, nothing was done and the incident happened and my child got jumped. Now, my thing is this, after getting jumped, okay, I understand, after getting jumped, I have another problem with, we send the kids to the system, straight to the system, without finding, now, what was the call? What was the problem? Not getting down to the root of the thing. The first thing that we do, we send them straight to the system to get locked, to get fingerprinted, to get locked up, not finding out what, what happened. So, all it does is starts a cycle. My thing is break the cycle. And as we, as people, as the board members and family and friends and loved ones, we need to come together. My thing is this, we got another school year coming, we need to do, as the young lady said, having more security guards, it need to be more security guards. We need to work together as bus members, cafeteria, school staffs, or whatever, to safety of the staff members as well as our kids. Thank you.
And our final scheduled speaker is Janice Maddox. And again, Ms. Maddox, if you would state your name and address as we welcome you to the podium.
My name is Janice Maddox. My address is 3407 Avenue R., Fort Pierce, Florida, 34947. Good evening, board members. I come standing before you, telling you know that I am outraged on what happened on April 9th, 2019, at Lincoln Park Academy against my grandson. I am torn because what happened to my grandson should not have happened. I am a member of the Mental Health Institute. What happened to my grandson should not have happened. My grandson, if he had hidden that pavement, could not have been here. What I want to be done for the situation to happen to my grandson is for the CEO to be fired. I want the implication to be known that I do not want that CEO to be hired in St. Lucie County or anywhere else. I do want you to know that I am for the mental health to be implemented into all schools and for every CEO at any school to be trained and to be trained properly to handle any ES students that has a mental problem, to be trained correctly to handle them in any situation. Because you do not handle any student that is an ES student that way to de-escalate any situation that is going on, especially when that child is walking away, to de-escalate the situation that is going on. When there is no reason for a student to be taken down in that form or fashion because that deputy was out to hurt my grandson. No child that is an ESE student that has a mental problem should ever have to go through anything like that. That deputy should have been trained correctly to take care of a student correctly that is walking away from any situation to de-escalate it. If he did not know how to de-escalate that properly, he should have called someone to take care of that situation. Now, we hired you guys to make sure that everything was taken care of. Now, you say that you have the funds, you're going to hire more school resource officers. Please, please, I beg of you, make sure that they are trained properly. Make sure that if there's a student that is walking away from a situation to de-escalate it, make sure that that SOR is doing the right thing. If he feels as though he cannot do it, he need to call someone, he or she, to take care of the situation. Because what happened to my grandson should not have happened. My grandson could have been paralyzed, my grandson could have been dead. Now, I want to read a letter to you that I typed up because on what happened that day, the officer called me and told me- day, the officer called me and told me casually that he had to take down my grandson, and that my grandson had a superficial cut on his knee, and that he was going to have my grandson baker-acted and brought to New Horizon. And I told him, if you're going to do that, one thing you need to know, he cannot come to New Horizon, because I work there, and there's a conflict there. And I asked him, are you sure that you're going to do that? And he said, yes. And then he told me, oh, I forgot that you work at New Horizon. During this statement, he did not tell me the reason why my grandson was being baker-acted, the reason why he got arrested, but he did tell me, and to let you know, when he get released, there will be a warrant out for his arrest. He did not explain to me the reason for the warrant, or anything, but casually hung up the phone. I had to get a call from my husband to let me know that my grandson was being transported to JFK. Then after he got out, he had to spend 21 days in a juvenile detention center for being chest-bumped by a teacher that pressed charges on him. For what? Being chest-bumped by a teacher is not battery, especially when a teacher was the one that caused the incident, and was the one that started it. So I don't understand how he can be defended by Sheriff Mascara.
That's time. We do have one unscheduled speaker to come before us tonight, Reverend Harris. We welcome you to the podium as well tonight, with a reminder that as an unscheduled speaker, you will have three minutes to speak.
I believe that I can do that.
Okay.
You know, I looked up and saw the sign that said, "Every child can succeed, no exceptions." I hope that that is the sentiment of the whole county. My name is Reverend Dr. Francis Harris, 1362 Southwest Broadview Street, Port St. Lucie, Florida. I am a radio broadcast minister and also an associate minister of New Testament Baptist Church of America. I was deeply disturbed by the video that I saw on the news, showing a child being slammed to the ground. I don't have any children currently in this system, but they are all my children. I worked in the school system 34 years myself, so I know sometimes they press those buttons, and push it to the breaking point, but nevertheless, we still have to refrain from doing anything that would bring harm to them, because if I remember correctly, you promised a nurturing and caring environment. I hope that still holds true. We, parent, teacher, principal, resource officer, janitor, cafeteria worker, bus driver, whatever part we play in their lives, we must be an example. Children live what they learn. If they are behaving in a way that is out of control, we are there to teach them how to handle life challenges in a peaceful way. What are we teaching them? If we lose it ourselves and commit a crime, as he said, he could have been injured. You promised, as I said, a nurturing and caring environment for our children. And I noticed that you have received an award for mental health awareness, so that means that you have the special needs at heart. I hope that the funding that you receive, the additional funding, that you will hire and train the right personnel. Sometimes people, this resource officer, maybe aid at handling traffic stops, maybe he's not supposed to work with kids. So that is something that I hope that you will evaluate and handle appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight as well. Dr. Mills, we will return to you for your comments.
I don't know how many other board members have heard from the community, because we are up under Sunshine Law, so we don't talk to one another about such issues. But I do know that I have heard from the Lincoln Park community, and I've heard from many of you. And I too am saddened on how the issue was handled. Superintendent already knows, the day that I heard about it, I wanted the deputy off the campus right away, until investigation. It didn't happen. So I can understand you being upset on how it was handled. And I just request that, as a board, we handle every situation as an individual issue or situation. And I still don't understand myself why the deputy was not taken off, at least until after investigation. But I have heard, even before that investigation was completed, that the deputy had done no wrong by his superior. That bothered me as well. So injustices is not going to be permitted up under my watch without me confronting and saying what's necessary. And I love this district, I love representing all of the people of this county, and we've done a great job, I believe, in the area of protecting our children and making sure they graduate from safe and caring schools. I don't know what happened in the last few weeks. This deputy, I too believe it was excess force, I'm going to say that right on the record, I mean, it's right there in front of my face. How can I deny that? And then I'm looking at what the other mother said, Ms. Nicole Reynolds, and I believe that happened at, you didn't make it clear what school it happened at, but I believe it was a, the thing that bothers me about what you said, was that you called the school and asked them to help your daughter because she was being bullied, and nothing was done, and the next thing we know, we have this huge fight over there at Westwood. So I know because of these incidents, we are going to work on it, and I hope and pray that this is addressed properly, and that our SRO officers, we need to definitely make sure that they are trained very well from this point on, because we do not, the community, I know, do not want them in the schools mistreating some of our students. And as, as the minister said, what was done at that moment, I've heard the child has had a serious disbehavior problem, but that is no excuse to how that child was treated on that video, being lifted up. He's a sixth grader, he's 11 years old. I personally say I'm sorry for what took place, and I hope that we can do something better in the future, if not even now. But I will not let wrong and injustice go without speaking out on such.
That does bring a conclusion to our board meeting tonight, so allow me to close. As Superintendent Jent said, this is our last official board meeting before the summer, before the children leave our centers and the summer sets in, so I wish to add our thanks to each of you for all of your work and guidance with the children throughout the school year, and I hope for you all a very restful and rejuvenating summer. We are adjourned.